Yes, if we can put our cellphone on silent mode. And if they're wearing any headgear unless it's necessary for health reasons, please kind of remove them. We shall begin. This is the third day, fourth regular session. Today is Thursday, November 3rd, 2022, at 1:34 PM here at the Tinian Courthouse. And please, may I ask everyone to please rise for a moment in silent. And before I recognize the clerk to call the roll, I would like to recognize the presence of our Honorable Governor Ralph de Longuero Torres. Thank you for joining us this afternoon, Mr. Governor. And I also, on behalf of the people of the Commonwealth, thank you for signing that bill into law, effectuating the much-needed request by the families that are affected. But with your approval of that law, that gave leeway for them to receive whatever benefits they'll be getting. Thank you so much, God, for doing that honor here on Tinian. I also like to recognize the presence of the Commissioners for Election Commission. They're in full swing here. The Executive Director, Ms. Kela Eto'o, thank you for joining us this afternoon. Former Senator Jose de la Cruz, thank you, sir, for joining us. And everybody else that are joining us this afternoon. Recognize the appointee for Tinian, Mr. Jonathan Manglonia. So with that, clerk, please call the roll. Gaya.
Mr. President?
May I?
Senator King Neighbors?
Here.
Senator Sablon?
Gaya.
Senator Sancus? Senator de Longuero?
She's present. I can see her on Zoom. I don't, not sure about the others, but...
Senator, can you unmute your mic?
Let's keep a short recess. That'll be good.
Short recess?
Short recess, no. We're back in session, and before we take that lengthy break, we were actually on Roco. And the last call was made was third second round, Senator Edith de Longuero, which she is present. But I want to recognize again the clerk to continue on with your call. Gaya. Thank you, clerk. With nine members present, we have quorum to conduct today's session. Under Item B and public comment, I recognize any member of the public to offer testimonial or comment with any items in today's order of business. Items in today's order of business. But before I recognize any member of the public who wish to offer a public comment, I want to recognize our mayor from the island of Tinian, the Honorable Edwin P. Odon. Mr. Mayor, thank you for always joining us in our session. We appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. Any member of the public would like to offer public comment? Being none, let the record reflect that there's no one in the general public would like to offer public comment today. And with that, I recognize the floor leader to offer the appropriate motion to consider a couple of items that are not necessarily in the order of business today. So floor leader, recognize.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this moment, I'd like to offer a motion to suspend Rule 3, Section 3 of the Official Rules of the Senate, and in compliance with the Open Government Act, to amend today's agenda to include Standing Committee Report Number 22-92. And this, Mr. President and members, is in reference of the Executive Appointments and Governmental Investigations Committee meeting this morning, a public hearing to hear Jonathan Christopher A. Manglonia to member of the Commonwealth Election Commission. So move, Mr. President.
Second. The motion offered by the floor leader for the suspension of rules for the placement of Standing Committee Report as read by the floor leader and has been seconded, discussion? Ready. Clerk, please call the roll for the approval of the suspension of rules.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, but I do not have a copy of the committee report right now.
Okay. Can you forward the document to the senators? This is for placement of the committee report.
Are you placing it on the calendar?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I will ask for that.
So clarify, so what's your vote? Senator Manglonia, recognize.
To amend the motion to see if the members would consider placing also in our agenda the Senate Joint Resolution that I introduced in the last session, recognizing the former Washington Representative Edward Pangilinen, which is a Senate Joint Resolution Number 22-13, or rather, 22-14. You know, the honorable gentleman, and I understand, is very ill at the moment, and it would be nice to have this resolution passed by the Senate and subsequently by the House. So I ask if that motion can be amended to include Senate Joint Resolution 22-14, honoring Edward de Longuero Pangilinen, to be placed under our resolution calendar in today's session. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Manglonia. And let me just reclarify, the floor leader's motion is to suspend rules to allow for the placement of the Standing Committee Report as read out. The Senate Joint Resolution 15 and the Senate Joint Resolution for Mr. Pangilinen. So if you can just allow the motion for suspension to to be approved, and then the floor leader will make that appropriate motion. So we're still under Roco for suspension of rules to amend the agenda. So is that clar-, does that answer your request, Senator?
Well, as long as we discuss the motion to place 22-14 so that the Senate can dispose of the resolution today, you know, maybe in another motion, if it will not be included to amend this present motion so that it can be a subsidiary motion.
I want to clarify one more time that the call was to amend the agenda, the order of business. So that would include, he's gonna make, the floor leader is gonna make another appropriate motion for the placement of such resolutions and the the committee report for Mr. Jonathan Manglonia. This is what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna ask the, recognize the floor leader to restate his motion. So let's reel that back, our call for approval, and recognize again Senator Vini Sablon to restate his motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. And at your request, this, I will restate the motion. And the motion is to amend today's agenda to suspend Rule 3, Section 3 of the Official Rules of the Senate and in compliance with the Open Government Act, to amend today's agenda to include Standing Committee Report Number 22-92. And that is in reference of the Executive Appointments and Governmental Investigations Committee meeting this morning to hear Mr. Jonathan Christopher A. Manglonia to serve on the Commonwealth Election Commission. In addition to that, Mr. President and members, also, we will include in today's agenda a Senate Joint Resolution, Senate Joint Resolution Number 22-14, to recognize and honor Edward de Longuero Pangilinen for his monumental service and role in shaping the history and future for the people of the Commonwealth of the Northern Marana Islands. Mr. President and members, I move for this motion.
This may be a motion offered by the floor leader to suspend the appropriate rules or the pertinent rules and for the placement on today's order of business, the following items that he read, and it's been seconded. Discussion? Ready for the approval of the floor leader's request? Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Gaya.
Gaya.
Yes.
With nine members voting yes, the suspension of rules and the amendment of the order of business for today's sessions hereby approved by the full Senate. And without any objection from the members, the chair wishes to entertain standing, Item M, on the reports of standing committees. And with that, I now recognize the floor leader to offer the appropriate motion to entertain the Standing Committee Report from EAGI. Floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. And under Item M, Reports of Standing Committees on today's agenda, we have Standing Committee Report 22-92 from your committee on Executive Appointments and Governmental Investigations, reporting on the executive appointment of Jonathan Christopher A. Manglonia to serve on the Commonwealth Election Commission, representing the second senatorial district. Mr. President and members, I move for its adoption.
Motion offered by the floor leader for the adoption of 22-92 from the Executive Appointment and Governmental Investigation Committee, reporting on the appointment of Mr. Jonathan Christopher Manglonia to represent the island of Tinian, second senatorial district in the Commonwealth Election Commission. It's been seconded. Discussion. Under discussion, I recognize the chair, Senator Francisco Q. Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, members of the Senate, your committee on executive appointment and investigation are ready to report Standing Committee Report Number 22-92. And this is the executive appointment of Jonathan Christopher A. Manglonia to serve on the Commonwealth Election Commission, representing the second senatorial district. Your committee on executive appointments and investigations, to which was referred the appointment of Mr. Manglonia to serve as a Commonwealth Election Commission, representing the second senatorial district, beg leave to report as follow. After review and consideration of testimonies provided, your committee recommends the confirmation of Mr. Jonathan Christopher A. Manglonia executive appointment to serve on the Commonwealth Election Commission to represent the second senatorial district, Tinian. And pursuant to Rule 8, Section 5 of the Official Rules of the Senate, it is the duty and purpose of your committee to report to the Senate for legislative action pertaining to the executive appointment of Mr. Jonathan Christopher A. Manglonia to serve on the Commonwealth Election Commission to represent the second senatorial district. Your committee has examined all pertinent documents relating to the executive appointment of Mr. Manglonia's overall credentials to serve on the Commonwealth Election Commission. And in summation of all written and oral testimonies provided to the committee, there were ten oral testimonies in support of the point, of which one hard copy of the testimony stated was submitted on the date of the hearing, and one written testimony in support of the appointee. No written or oral testimonies in opposition of the appointee were received by the committee. Additionally, your committee stated several recommendations, issues and concern to the appointee that are included in this report. And based on the overall assessment of Mr. Manglonia's credentials, experiences, testimonials, goals for the agency, and other relevant issues considered, your committee is convinced that Mr. Manglonia has the qualification and leadership skills necessary to serve on the Commonwealth Election Commission. The public hearing was conducted, conducted today, November 3rd, 2022, here at the Tinian Courthouse San Jose, Tinian. And during the hearing, certain recommendations, issues and concerns were raised for the appointee to address and look into when confirmed as a board member. Additionally, the Commonwealth Election Commission Executive Director, Ms. Kela S. Egito, accompanied the appointee to assist in addressing some of the concerns and questions that were raised by the committee. In conclusion, all the required documents in conformance with Rule 8, Section 5 of the Official Rules of the Senate have been submitted to your committee for review and consideration. And based on the submission of pertinent documents and testimonies, your committee concludes that the appointment of Mr. Jonathan Christopher A. Manglonia to serve on the Commonwealth Election Commission is in accordance with 1 CMC, subsection 6102. Therefore, your committee concerns the confirmation of Mr. Jonathan Christopher A. Manglonia to serve on the Commonwealth Election Commission to represent the second senatorial district, Tinian. Again, I ask the full body of this Senate to support Standing Committee Report Number 22-92. Thank you, Mr. President.
Sees us, mosey, Senator Cruz. Any other member would like to offer, Senator Cruz, recognize?
Mr. President, before you allow, no, I would like to ask the clerk or the staff to please make correction on the, on the conclusion part. Instead of reappointment, it's appointment of Mr. Jonathan, just to make correction on that, on the committee report. Thank you.
Clerk, can at least make note of that? Any other member would like to offer comments before the members? Ready? So we're gonna take Roco to the entire members of the Senate present today. And at this time, I recognize the clerk.
Yes.
Very well, very well.
Yes.
Gaya.
Yes.
Gaya.
Yes, yes.
Again. With nine members voting yes, Standing Committee Report Number 22-92, reporting on the appointment of Mr. Jonathan Christopher A. Manglonia to serve as the Commissioner for second, representing second senatorial district in the Commonwealth Election Commission, is hereby adopted and passed, therefore approving and approving the nomination of Jonathan to the election board. Short recess. We're back in session. Let the record reflect that Senator, floor leader Sablon has to exit the session early. Therefore, the chair is appointing Senator Carl King Neighbors to be the acting floor leader for the rest of the session. So before we take that brief recess, we dispose of the Standing Committee Report on Item M. Therefore, would like to go back to reading and approval of the Journal, Item C, and I recognize the floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. Under Item C, reading and approval of the Journal, we have one journal today for adoption, Senate Journal 2233, first emergency session dated September 30th, 2022. I move for its adoption.
With the motion offered by the floor leader for adoption of Senate Journal 2232, we'll hear a second. See any discussion? All those in favor of the motion for the approval of Senate Journal 2232, please say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Senate Journal 2232 is hereby adopted or approved. Item D, messages from the governor. Any comments from the members? Communications from judiciary? Communications from the House, or I'm sorry, communications from the heads of the executive department?
We have one, 2242, the LBDW's citizen's senate report, 2242.
Any comments from the members? Communications from the House?
We have only one, Mr. President, 22-177.
Any comments? Communication from the Senate?
We have three on the agenda, 2219, 2192.
Comments from the members? Communication from Washington, delegate?
None.
Unfinished business?
None, Mr. President.
Prefiled bills initiatives, local bills and resolutions?
We have two, Mr. President. One, 22, the spectacle, Senate joint resolution, and Senate commemorative plan to the soul.
Which both are properly placed for the correct, clerk?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, we're moving on to Item M.
None.
Item M, done, item M. Item O, resolution calendar. Recognize the short recess. Okay, we're back in session, and I'm just trying to clarify on the appropriate motion for reference to Senate Joint Resolution 2214 and 2215. So at this time, the chair recognizes the floor leader to offer the appropriate motion for the placement of both Senate Joint Resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. With no objections, I would like to place, offer a motion to place two Senate Joint Resolutions on today's resolution calendar for action. First one being Senate Resolution, Senate Joint Resolution 2214, to recognize and honor Edward de Longuero Pangilinen for his monumental service and role in shaping the history and the future for the people of Commonwealth of Northern Marana Islands. Secondly, Senate Joint Resolution 22-15, to acknowledge and honor Mr. Howard Penny Woodens for his devoted efforts towards the establishment of the Commonwealth of Northern Marana Islands and betterment of his people, citizens and future. Mr. President and members, I ask that it be placed on the resolution calendar.
Motion offered for the placement of Senate Joint Resolution Number 2214 and Senate Joint Resolution Number 2215 by the floor leader, it's been seconded. All those in favor for the placement of Senate Joint Resolution 2214 and Senate Joint Resolution 2215 on today's resolution calendar, please say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Senate Joint Resolution Number 2214 and Senate Joint Resolution 2215 is hereby placed on today's resolution calendar. Moving on, under Item O, the chair recognizes the floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under Item O, resolution calendar, we have Senate Commemorative Resolution Number 2203, honoring the life and selfless contributions of the late Jackson Sumal Kypat Davis, and paying humble tribute for his life, for his tribute, for humble tribute for his years of exceptional public service and law enforcement of the Commonwealth of Northern Marana Islands, introduced by Senator Manny Chivizawa. Mr. President and members, I offer, I move on. I'd like to move for its adoption.
Motion offered for adoption of Senate Joint, or Senate Resolution, Senate Resolution Number 22-03. Do I hear a second to that motion? Yeah. Seconded, discussion? All those in favor for the adoption of Senate Resolution Number 22-03, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. And I want to restate, it's Senate Commemorative Resolution Number 22-3. It's been seconded, discussion? Ready? All those in favor for the adoption of Senate Commemorative Resolution Number 22-03, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Senate Commemorative Resolution Number 22-03 is hereby adopted. Floor leader?
Thank you. Mr. President and members, the next resolution for action is Senate Joint Resolution 2214, to recognize and honor Edward de Longuero Pangilinen for his monumental service and role in shaping the history and future for the people of the Commonwealth of Northern Marana Islands, introduced by Senator Pauline Wood. I would like to move, I would like to offer a motion for its adoption.
Motion for adoption of Senate Joint Resolution Number 22-14, as read by the floor leader. Do I hear a second to that? Okay. Seconded, discussion?
If there's no objection, the committee of all can be put down as the sponsor of this resolution?
There's no objection. Ready? All those in favor of the motion for the adoption of Senate Joint Resolution Number 22-14, please say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Senate Joint Resolution Number 22-14, hereby adopted. Floor leader?
Thank you, Mr. President. The last resolution on today's bill calendar, or resolution calendar for action is Senate Joint Resolution 22-15, to acknowledge and honor Howard Penny Woodens for his devoted efforts towards the establishment of the Commonwealth of the Northern Marana Islands and betterment of the citizens and future, introduced by Senator Edith de Longuero. Mr. President and members, I would like to offer a motion for its adoption.
Motion offered by the floor leader for the adoption of Senate Joint Resolution Number 22-15. Do I hear a second, second? And it's been seconded. Discussion? All those in favor for the adoption of Senate Joint Resolution Number 22-15, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Senate Joint Resolution Number 22-15 is hereby adopted by the Senate. Moving on, under LDP bill calendar. At this time, I recognize the floor leader to offer a motion for consideration on Senate Bill Number 22-77.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senate Bill, Mr. President and members, today we have on the bill calendar, Senate Bill 22-77, to amend 3 CMC, subsection 1611C4 and 5, man 1612A, to allow nursing scholarship recipients to work at the private sector in the Commonwealth of the Northern Marana Islands upon completion of their nursing education and other purposes. Mr. President and members, I move for its passage.
May a motion for the passage of Senate Bill Number 22-17, offered by the floor leader. Do I hear a second to that motion? Seconded? Under discussion? Right? No further discussion? You sure? All right, Roco, clerk.
Senator Cruz?
Yes.
Senator de Longuero?
Yes.
Senator Hoco?
Yeah.
Senator King Neighbors?
Yes.
Senator Manglonia?
Senator Manglonia?
Yes.
Senator Pidiw?
Again.
Senator Santi?
Yes.
Again.
Mr. President, eight members voting yes, one action.
With eight members voting yes and one action, Senate Bill Number 22-77, hereby passed in the Senate. Floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next, a bill on our bill calendar for action is Senate Bill 22-78 to amend for CMC, subsection 1205, to include Northern Marianas Technical Institute as a qualified educational institution to benefit from educational tax credits. Mr. President and members, I move for its passage.
Yeah.
The motion offered by the floor leader for the passage of Senate Bill 22-78 and it's been seconded. Discussion? Clerk, please call the room.
Senator Cruz?
Yes.
Senator de Longuero?
Yes.
Senator?
Again.
Senator King Neighbors?
Yes.
Senator Manglonia?
Yes.
Senator Pidiw?
Again.
Senator Santi?
Yes, yes.
De Longuero?
Yes.
Again.
Mr. President, all eight members voting yes.
With eight members voting yes, Senate Bill Number 22-78 is hereby passed in the Senate. And for the next view, before final reading, I ask that we place this at this end of the calendar for next session. Thank you. Members, under item Q, issues be more than the status communications?
Mr. President, we have none.
Any announcements? Anouncements? Dirtmen?
The others.
Floor leader, please offer motion for adjournment of the session.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President and members, I would like to offer a motion to adjourn today's third day for the regular session, subject to the policy.
Motion offered to adjourn this Senate session by the floor leader, seconded? All those in favor, motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. This Senate session stands adjourned. Thank you, members, for your participation. Good afternoon.